Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much and welcome everyone to our special meeting of January twenty fifth. We only on the thing on the agenda is going to be a delegation with Mr. John Barrows and Sean Mitchinson from Next Energy Development, Inc. So I'll get the meeting open so be resolved that this special meeting be open at six thirty one P M. Do I have movers and seconders on this? So it's moved by councillor Shane, seconded by deputy mayor Denham, all in favor. Motion is carried. It resolved that the agenda be approved as presented moved by councillor Shane again, seconded by deputy mayor Denham, all in favor. Motion is carried. Do I or do we have any particular interest nature thereof? Seeing none. So that delegation. So municipal sustainability infrastructure development strategy will be presented, as I mentioned, by Mr. Barrows and Mr. Mitchinson from Next Energy Development Group Incorporated. Do you want to read the motion first or how about if I just let them? So we'll get the the motions after. So the floor is yours if you want to start the presentation. Actually, no. So you should turn on if. There you go.
Now we're on. Okay. So basically, I'll start with a short introduction if you guys on my next slide, please. So. So who we are, we're fundamentally a Canadian company. We've been in, I've been in business since two thousand and four. Developed the first large scale wind project in King Carden. Since then, I've developed heck gigawatts of projects all over the world and Southeast Asia, South America, Central America, Canada, U S and all over. So anyways, we've got a lot of experience in developing and putting together renewable energy projects for a variety of customers, both industrial and commercial and so forth. So we we're fundamentally utility scale. But as of about six years ago, we decided to get off of the utility of the large scale projects and start working with communities, predominantly with communities to try to reduce the carbon footprint. We thought we'd have more impact that way than selling big projects to grid operators that would work. So how we function as a company, we're kind of loose set. We try to maintain low overhead and try to me take advantage of the network of people that we've come across over twenty somewhat years in a business. And what that enables us to do is to bring the right group to to focus on the specifics of any project. So we don't have dead weight. I hate to call people that, but you know, you hire an energy manager and then you got to hold them on for the whole year as a salary when you only need them for one or two project. This allows us to just get people to do that. We pay a bit more, but we get the right qualified people to do the the right projects, right? So fundamentally, that's what we do. Our our success is built on community relationships. We don't burn bridges and we come back. In this municipal, in S D G alone, we were working with South Storm and I'm sure you know, North Dundas, you in your community as well, hopefully. So let's see, next slide, please. Next one, sorry. Sorry. So what we do, we do fundamentally, we come in, we do a project feasibility, right? So we tell you, we we design, we tell you if the project is feasible, what it will take to take to get a project from conception to realization. So there apparently on on face their value, they're actually quite simple to put together, but in in actual fact, they're quite complicated. There's grid interconnection, there's net metering arrangements with the grid, how you're going to store the power. Your time of usage is not necessarily correspondent to what time you're you're actually generating power from the solar array. So you need to manage that load. There's a bunch of efficiencies that you can take advantage of by offsetting time of usage and other features that allow us to optimize the system. So we don't just design it, we design it, taking your particular usage of a facility in 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 mind. So we optimize it for your use. We do everything in our power to bring it together, including financing, including everything. So we work with you from the beginning to the end. We work as consultants. So we're technology agnostic and firm agnostic. We really don't have a choice. We prepare everything, we design, we build it, and then we leave it up to you. Present all the data and then you tender it out and you you see who you would like to use. And we just, but we do hang out, sorry about the term hangout. We do stick around to make sure that everything is built according to specifications. It's our responsibility. We always take the project from complete from initiation to completion, right? So next. In this particular case, what we're focusing on is the grand opportunities from this C B R, which is community buildings retrofit. They allow for a greenhouse gas reduction pathway funding study, right? So this feasibility study, what it really tries to do is it works with you to try to identify. We do a full blown level two energy audit. We actually do a take it to a level three, which is we actually procure, get the prices. And so that you can make a life cycle analysis cost of everything. We don't just say, okay, if you put in an electric ice sweet surface or you take into consider, you will save so much energy, we actually take into consideration and quantify what it will save you over the life cycle of the of the new technology that you've introduced. So we try to quantify not only the savings, but also put them in the context of what you're going to use. So we do those retrofits through C B R. C B R funds up to eighty percent of that study, twenty percent has to be paid by you. They want you to have some skin in the game. Part of that C B R feasibility study. We are mandated to, once we identify what your needs are and how we can best optimize your system or your operations, each individual building. And we also research every possible available grant. And we're allowed within the funds of that C B R funding stream to prepare an application for those other funding streams. Should you not have any other funding streams and you want to just go with C B R, there is the capital built project, which will they will contribute to twenty percent of the total cost of the project if for eligible costs up to a total of five million, right? Five million for the portfolio of projects. Is sixty percent as a loan, right? As a low interest loan, there's been guaranteed. So they 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 not only give you a low interest rate loan, they actually give you the backing. So the and then twenty percent, of course, is yours. That said, there is the G I C B funding, which is the one that we're attracted to. You are have already taken advantage of that. G I C B is particularly interesting in that it pays eighty percent up to eighty percent of the total retrofit costs, right? That said, the G I C B has run into sort of a reserve. So they're now, what was to be a small projects on an ongoing basis being accepted, they're now asking that we submit all projects by the twenty eighth of February. Just as a parentess, we don't have a problem submitting your portfolio of projects within the twenty eighth. It does mean that we would have to work extra hard. We're willing to do that. So we're we'll be fine to do that. So those are the ones that there are other retrofits available from G M F, right? Green Municipal Fund and others that we can take advantage of. It depends on, once we look at the building, then we identify what upgrades and what retrofits are required or suggested. We always come back to you just before we make anything. And then you say, okay, this is how we're going to prioritize them. And then we take those forward and we find the applicable funding stream for it, be it the Green Municipal Fund, be it G I C B, be it the even the C B R, your community buildings retrofit capital funds. Okay, so next. So in this case, specific, we're going to, I think. Right, next one is. So. Community building retrofit, right? Oh, sorry, there's a slide missing. Sorry. So you know, most of this, which buildings are allocated for this in your portfolio of projects for the G I C B. One of the requirements is that it be a community or a public access building, right? So for that, we we have a list of projects that you submitted to us for consideration and we've identified the ones that would qualify for the G I C B funding. And we would focus on those, give those priority going forward, right? So we know all the rest of this. So sorry, go ahead. Next one. We do the next one. Yes, please. Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
You go for it, yeah.
No, no, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine. So this is basically what they're saying, that the G H G reduction pathway. So we're talking about the feasibility study. What that, what we have to identify as part of that study is we have to give you a pathway to reducing up to eighty percent of your total. Get, why don't you talk a bit?
Yeah, so the greenhouse gas reduction pathway feasibility study, it's our role and the deliver, the main deliverable of the study is to find a path that municipality can take to a target net zero operation of the facility, meeting a minimum of eighty percent greenhouse gas reduction. So our first targets are electrification. But we we come and quantify what's there, figure out the path to achieving those targets and going through the cost estimates, figuring all that out before you bring it up to a class B estimate. What's great about the feasibility study is that is it's a long term plan. So we're looking twenty years into the future. So by undergoing the study, you're able to have a life cycle cost for the next twenty years, including replacement of components that are set to reach the end of their life cycle. And as John mentioned, the pathway study can be used, you can include as a deliverable, they ask that you include as a deliverable applications to any other applicable funding streams such as the G I C B. The next step of the study, as we'll get to, is the C B R capital project, which also allows you to implement the study. And what's great about the capital project is that although eighty percent is a good target and definitely an achievable target, they allow you to take a staged approach. So you can move at a speed that municipality is comfortable with implementing a first round of energy conservation measures that are more attractive. And then as components die out, you can replace them down the line.
The only thing I would add to that, sorry, is that it's noncommittal. So we, the purpose of this study is to identify a pathway to reduce your greenhouse gas emissions by eighty percent. Now, what means by you have as a deliverable on this study, we have to show you a path in twenty years, how you would receive, which achieve that target. So pardon my French, come hell or high water, we have to show how you would do it. Now, if it's not economically viable, including buying carbon credits or the rest, so be it. But we have to show you how you would achieve it. So what that allows you to do is it gives you a pathway, which is really what the name is, is to say, okay, these are the measures we would implement right now, which are feasible and we have a budget for and we have funding for. These are are put on our wish list. We'd like to do them in ten fifteen years. And or when grant or funding becomes available for this type of of retrofit. So it's noncommittal. The only thing that we have to commit to is delivering you a plan that is viable, accepted by them, and that has a that meets their long term part of targets. So by doing this study, you actually will have a path, if you will, on how to achieve that target. It's up to you to implement that target according to your budget and as funding streams become available to do it. Okay. So sorry, next slide, please.
I might just interject. So is it easier to, as you move on to finish that, I think, go to questions or would you prefer getting questioned as we move along?
I'm 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 really quite flexible, really. I mean, this is explaining a lot about the the projects and about the pathways and the rest. I normally I would do that as an introduction, but quite frankly, you've gone through G I C B. You're okay with it. You can feel free to ask us the questions and just shoot.
Just opening up. So we'll keep going, but if anybody has questions, just.
Yeah, I can interject at any at any point. So what it is now is, I'm sorry, do you want, if you wanted to do some of it, Sean, so you're not just sitting there as it it just says that, you know, we we have to reach a a minimum of thirty percent G H G reduction from your baseline. So once again, we conduct an energy audit. That audit establishes our baseline and then everything, it's from there from that baseline that then we're able to attribute a value to the savings that would be incurred by implementing the the suggested retrofits. Once again, you only implement the ones you want. You're not held to it. Should you go ahead and and let's say that G I C B ends, right? You're still eligible for the Capital Works project under C B R if you do this study. Okay, you're only eligible for C B R if you do this study. They want to know what your baseline case is, what your projected targets are and what efficiencies exactly you'll get, right? So they're very specific about that. Even the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, the Green Municipal Fund, will request that you have this study for funding from them, right? So that this is basically mandatory. If you want to get funding, you need to know where you are and you need to show them where you hope to be and what those, what the retrofits will take you, how far along that path, right? Fair enough. Next slide.
One thing I might add to this, this can be used as a deliverable for funding streams that are available now, but it also follows standardized audit procedures and guidelines. So if something else should come up down the line in two, say, five years, you have a twenty year plan. So if there's a highly competitive grant that comes out, you could be first in line to submit because you did the groundwork years ago.
Like you already have the audit, you already have everything lined up. All you have to do is pull the trigger and submit with the retrofit. So go ahead.
Just a quick question, because I'm trying to find, I'm trying to absorb all the eligibility elements and stuff and you're saying, you know, we're shooting for eighty percent reduction. And that sounded like, as you were saying, that that could be ramped over over a period of time. Is that is that determined based on the plan or is that measured after it's in place and?
No, so if I may, so once again, that's the baseline case is the first time when we do an energy audit, a a level two, which is quite complex and it says so in the scope of work, right, that we handed out to you. That energy audit will tell you where you are right now. So it's eighty percent from that metric that you have right now from current values, right? In the case of Moose Creek, right, which is a new build and it's all on spec. So we have to take this point zero being that part, right? Like what it'll be with all the new retrofits. In the case of the the arena, yeah, you're already having a substantial amount of retrofit. So in talking to Craig, he will, he's able to get us that data of all the retrofits so that we will have to we will, when we do the baseline calculations, I don't do the baseline calculations on what is existing now. I do the baseline calculations on what you will have with those retrofits. And then I will start benchmarking it from there forward.
Right, but do we actually measure it as a result in the future at once it's in, or is this just projected off of your calculations upfront?
No, you actually measure it in the future. Yeah.
And if we, so again, let's say that we did solar panels to help offset that. And based on our projections, we think it's going to to generate this much electricity to offset it. But if we had a particularly cloudy year or something like that, or lots of snow coverage and we weren't generating that, then we may miss that target over time then.
Right.
Standing that correctly.
Yes and no, because those calculations are made are made on as part of our study when we do that. The way energy is calculated, we actually, so when you look at a data set, we don't take into consideration last year's data, last year's weather, right? Or the year before, we actually look at current values and then do a forward projection based on the last twenty years. Okay, so we act, so it it it's not really, it's actually quite accurate. What will happen is, and that's where you, sorry, not in engineering, you go into P nineties, P eighty five or or P sixties probability factor, right? So you to get, when you go to get finance and you need at least a P ninety value, so ninety percent of the time. So what happens is you establish the benchmark at that P ninety, not at what I said. But what I said minus ten, which is the margin of error potential over a twenty twenty five year life cycle of the the solar panels. Yes, you may have one month that's cloudiered in another. But on average, you will get that value. So you may lose it one year, you may have five percent less. Next year, you're probably going to get three percent more than following year, two or three more. So it tends to balance out. And that's why that probability factor is essential for bankers and for people who do calculations. So excuse me. So although we put in a number, that number has to be subject to to a rating of probability. Do you want to add anything?
If I, as an engineer. So the grants, the feasibility study, we use our modeling to project what the greenhouse gas reductions will be. And that is, once we submit the report, we're not going to wait twenty years to submit the report. We do our modeling, submit the report. But then on a basis after that, it is, you measure and verify the savings, as you mentioned, to see if solar is down one year. And as John mentioned, the probability factor does account for that. But so the report is submitted based off the model and it is measured.
Oh, and and not to mention, you do it on the software. It's called Red Screen. So we're mandated to input all the data into a red screen model. We use P V SIS obviously to, which is much more sophisticated, but you have to do. But Red Screen allows you to do the building envelope losses, energy control systems, it allows you to model it all. So if it shows on that software that, by the way, you, when you're doing the C B R and when you're doing the G I C B, you actually use their portal. So you you actually go, you actually go to G I C B and you have to input the data on their server so that they can validate it, they can confirm it, and then that's how you arrive at their comfort level, right? You're using their software and their measurements. Fair enough. All right, next slide, I suppose. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So the C B R grant that we just mentioned, it's all housed, and so G I C B is housed under Infrastructure Canada. But the C community buildings retrofit or C B R, as we call it, as well as that is housed under the G M F or the Green Municipal Fund. A different branch under the G M F is the, they have a program for retrofit of municipal facilities. So that starts off similar to the community building retrofit. They have a process that is well defined and works well for people to follow. So under the retrofit of municipal facilities, it starts off with a study. It's a bit more targeted to different types of facilities other than like hockey ries and such, more so like municipal facilities. And it requires a production of twenty percent energy savings. Sorry, reduce the energy subs by thirty percent, a minimum of that being a twenty percent energy savings and up to ten percent of that can be from onsite renewable generation. This is a bit different than C B R in that it only does fifty percent up to one seventy five instead of the eighty percent that you can find through C B R. But it is and it's another funding stream that can have great. And it's another funding stream that can have great benefits and it moves on into a capital project as well.
So once again, we look at which one is the most feasible and which one will work for you. Um, an interesting thing with the C B R is that, I should have mentioned, they're actually stackable. Right? So if you apply for C B R, you can, you will still get the C B R contribution for Capital Works. You can apply for it, although you get G I C B. So G I C B would cover in, you know how to explain it better. They cover eighty percent. But you still get another twenty percent of your twenty percent that is your contribution. They will give you another twenty, if you can find another grant. Such as the one, I'm sorry, that Craig was talking about, that South Stormont actually got another grant. To cover the study, they're part of the study, which I will be glad to share with you afterwards. Um, so there are ways that you can actually get them. It doesn't mean, okay, we received C B R. That's it. You you don't get anything else. No, quite on the contrary, the idea of C B R. Is really to try to establish a pathway for you to achieve your objectives of greenhouse gas emissions, right? It by any means possible, the objective is to reduce greenhouse gas, right? So it's very, um. And and this is just another, one of the other ones by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
The deliverable report for C B R can be submitted through to the uh, retrofit of municipal facilities. It's just C B R is a bit more cost effective.
Okay, so now we're in green and inclusive community buildings, may as well keep going.
Um, so the G I C B, it's, uh, sorry, next slide, please. Um, it targets. It targets um. Municipal commu- public access facilities with aims of increasing, uh, reducing emissions, uh, improving energy savings and efficiency. And improving accessibility targets. Um, it's a truly great grant. It allows for up to eighty percent of eligible costs to be covered. As John mentioned, it can be stacked with the C B R funding. Um, so if G I C B gives you eighty percent. Of that remaining twenty percent, C B R would give you sixty percent as a loan and twenty percent as a grant. So essentially, if approved for G I C B and C B R, you would get about eighty four percent of the project covered, about. Nine percent is a loan and then the remaining few straggly ones are yours. Um, but you guys are familiar with this process. And the deadline is February twenty eighth for that one, but it's, um, there's a very heavy overlap between this and the C B R. And as has been stated, C B R allows you to pursue other funding streams. They actually encourage it.
Okay, so next up. So this, this is the one.
I'll interrupt, so go ahead, the counselor.
I might bring it up for my other new counselors, but it's been mentioned three, four times that we already know this, we already know the projects. I don't know.
We'll keep it slow, sorry.
No, like which projects have we done with this grant?
So this is a new council, so we have.
Oh, I'm sorry, you've used that green and inclusive community building fund to put the the building, uh, Moose Creek.
Right, through the chair, yes, we we see funding for Moose Creek. Seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we receive funding for a generator at the arena for sixty nine thousand, it's part of the same submission.
So that makes even your eligibility for these grants different, uh, even more likely. That's, I thought it was the whole thing.
Yeah, I was under the impression it was the furnaces for the arena as well, but.
The just, so there's a number of different streams, so the one I just indicated was for the C C R B.
Okay.
The the money for the arena, and I don't like to use which ones we've used because some of them are not. Well, we haven't done the announcements with the minister's office yet. Um, but we did have two seventy six for the retrofit at the arena that's being completed right now with. Electric ice reserver and other H vac.
So just to further on that, so the administration are following up and they're reverting down the information to us. But a lot of times to us is, oh, we got the grant. So so when you're speaking on the half of the.
Okay.
After you got to kind of put it down to our levels, which is, there's a few questions on here that I will relate. To simplify it a bit better to understand exactly what.
Then in that case, if you'll allow me, I'll go through the whole presentation. We won't skip anything because it does help to to quantify that. So what, um, uh, how much funding is available? This was a, uh, this was one point five billion in federal funding. Um, across Canada, um, there was the small retrofits where, which was a small money, it was just for small. Upgrades, if you wanted a furnace or if you wanted something like that, um, the medium retrofits were the ones that we were targeting. So anywhere from three hundred thousand, correct? Yeah, from two fifty to three million dollars. And then there was a large retrofit which allow you for a whole build. You could build, you could put up a building from scratch, if it was a community building and you could make a case for it, and they would fund it. Now, um, it used to be that up the five million in over the, what was called the large projects. They were accepted once a year. And the the up to three million dollar projects, retrofits, the medium ones. They were accepted on an ongoing basis, so there was no rush. You know, you just put it in and it was first come, first served. Our inside information is that the bucket is getting kind of low, so they're trying to. There were a lot of applications in, they want to know which ones are going to go, which ones aren't before they issue new rounds of funding. So they've asked everybody to submit by February twenty eighth, they they think they've got enough money. More than enough to cover until then, going forward, they'll reassess and then, you know, then I say there's more or there's not, it depends, right? So that's fundamentally where we're at, and that's why we have to submit before the twenty fifth, the twenty eighth, my my apologies. Um, next one, please. So the minimum eligibility requirements are. Building must be noncommercial, so it must be community owned, right? Um, it must be open in access to the public, right? It's, um, the building must be located and then should be. You get brownie points if you're in an underserved community. That doesn't mean that Toronto doesn't get grants and everything else like that. They still do, you just get brownie points, right?
And underserved population has many legs. Uh, the definition online can include anything from a. The definition can be found online, but it targets a lot of groups, so there's a lot of room to to work in that.
So once your application is processed and received, the only, the fundamental condition is that it must be, you must implement. Uh, the retrofits, you must take the money out by March thirty first, twenty twenty six, where we've, we've got more than enough time for that. Uh, the other good thing about this is that, sorry, and that's the the repair of the retro. They're trying to say that G I C B is mainly targeting is inclusivity. So buildings that provide better access to the community, so the more access, you get more brownie points. Um, and it must uh, be open to the public, must be a public building.
So I'll interject, so being a public building, so basically every uh, building that the municipality owns would.
Public access.
Public access, so does that eliminate our township garage? Does that eliminate our fire halls? Does that eliminate? So we're basically down to our community centers and the arena.
Yes, but allow me to refocus that. So in the G I C B, yes, yes, for the G I C B. Now, C B R, the community building retrofit, the one that funds the study. The requirement is that you must include at least one building that is community access. So as long as you have one building that's public access, you can put fifteen. Such as your municipal offices, such as your garages, such as your fire halls, O P P stations, whatever you want. And they'll fund it, but G I C B won't, but they'll fund the study and they're eligible for Capital Works and the same objective remains. So think of. C B R paves the road, right? Actually gives you a a blueprint. Or a pathway defines how you're going to reach your targets. G I C B is one of those means to achieving a target. It's a temporary one, it's a very good one. That does not mean that you don't have others that you can't use, right? So there's, you're still avail, there's still money available for for, from C B R. There's money available from a a host of other streams that we could and should target, right? So it doesn't mean that that we can't get C B R funding for your garages or for other things. Or the Federation of Canadian Municipalities won't give you money for that. It just means not from G I C B, no. And then I'll explain at the end why we're targeting and which buildings we would target and give priority to the G I C B. Because you can't do everything, but one of the problems with C B R is that you only get one kick at the can. So you, you're, you're motivated to include as many buildings as possible because you only get one. Study per municipality. That's it. If you. So Stormon only used it for one. Building, the arena. He told them we could include more. No, they didn't want to. They were only interested in that one. That's fine, right? Uh, North Undeath decided to include as many as possible. That's fine as well, right? But so. I would strongly suggest in what we're proposing, and you identified the twelve buildings that you had that were priority. So we prioritize the ones that would be G I C B, but we also prioritize, we also say, okay. This is how we can work with with finding solutions for the other ones as well and and pathway reductions. The good thing about G I C B is it allows you, it's. Primary target is the reduction of energy. The other one, C B R is is greenhouse gas emissions reduction. This one is energy, so it allows you to offset as much energy as you want. If you want to go totally off grid. You're eligible, so the funding is eligible for that. Another fundamental, and we can go to the next slide because I think it talks about that. Yes, so minimal um, eligibility required, it's zero carbon build, it's uh, whatever, even that. We can go to the next slide after that. Okay, so eligible buildings. So anything that's a recreation, I think we should, we we were getting there. So anything that's community cultural recreation facilities. Any of these things are good. What they also allow you to do is, for instance, you have a roof. Right? We're putting in a twenty five year cycle of panels. Your roof is leaking, your roof is looking like it needs repair. Okay, because we're putting in solar panels. And the solar panels are going to last for twenty five years, we have to therefore match. The life cycle of the roof. We don't want to be taking out the panels to replace the roof, so roof costs can be included. Um, we're trying to reduce energy consumption, so insulation is now considered. So there's a whole bunch of retrofits. You have gas heaters in your stands, in your public stance. Okay, we can substitute those for for electricity. Well, isn't electricity more expensive than gas? Yes, but you get the greenhouse gas reduction. It's much more impactful as a greenhouse gas. Natural gases than than electricity, because it has a lot lower carbon footprint. And especially if you're generating it yourself, well, then it's not costing you anything, right? So G I C B has, that's why it's a very, very, very interesting, um. It it's a very interesting grant structure because it allows, it gives you that flexibility. Some of the other ones like C B R, they don't allow you to go full offset on on renewable energy. They want you to concentrate on other things as well, right? On carbon reduction. Don't just go for getting off the grid. G I C B is the first one that it's green and inclusive buildings, right? So they want you to green the building. And that means renewable energy and so forth, right? Um, can we go to the next one or are there any questions?
So, sorry, quick question. So when you're saying we have to target an eighty percent reduction. Is that an eighty percent reduction in electricity or an eighty percent reduction greenhouse gas emissions?
Greenhouse gas emissions.
Okay.
Not electricity, greenhouse gas emissions.
Not sure how to equate to our.
Okay, so.
Our you, our usage of of electricity, let's say, especially in the arena where we're, we're, we're powering a condenser to uh, to. Keep the ice frozen, et cetera, et cetera, how that, how that plays into.
Okay, so your arena, just for, um, if if I may, Sean, I'm just going to find this, uh.
From my jump, and so the the arena or ice refrigeration plant is powered by electricity. Uh, the main gas consuming components there are the water heaters that you use to preheat the floodwater. Uh, one conservation measure that no point getting into now, but there are measures identified, uh, which can help reduce that. And eliminate the need to preheat the floodwater. And since gas is much more emitting than electricity by eliminating the gas components first, and keep in mind. If you just put a gas furnace in a building, we don't need to include that in the J I C B application right away. We can put that, get the study outlined when your furnace needs to be replaced and then propose in eight years when the life cycle runs out. Replace it with electric, carbon tax might make it a bit more cost effective by that point. But so, yeah, greenhouse gas emissions, different than electricity, easiest way to target greenhouse gas emissions is improve efficiencies and electrify. And to reduce energy consumption, it's efficiencies.
So how how to answer to your question, so in the in the particular case of the Finch Arena. The Finch Arena emits seventy thousand three hundred and seventy nine kilo kilograms of carbon. So seventy times a year. How did they arrive at that calculation? So when you say I use so many kilowatts of energy. The Ontario Grid has a emission ratio per kilowatt of energy generated. Uh, that differs from province to province. If you're going in Nova Scotia, it'll be much higher. So one kilowatt will have a much higher uh, carbon footprint because they still use coal and so forth, right? Ours is, um, Ontario's is pretty low, so. That's why C B R doesn't want you to rely only on electricity, because you're going after the savings, right, as opposed to, I mean, if, let's face it. Let's go, uh, uh, let's call it what it is. If you're, look, a retrofit on one of your roofs would cost you what, a mill, a million something, right? Uh, putting another, a solar array in there would probably cost you seven hundred thousand or something like that. When you put the two together, um, you're going to end up paying. If you pay twenty percent of that, doesn't, it's not rocket science, right? So with four hundred thousand. You get a new roof, insulation, the whole nine yards, and you get free energy. So it's really a no brainer, and that's why. G I C B has been extremely attractive, right? So C B R says, do this study, show me how you're going to keep on giving. How you're going to keep reducing, ensure, and I'll give you some money to. So that you can prepare applications for G I C B, right? So how you can do it. But fundamentally, that's that, and that's based on fifty one thousand kilowatt hours annually. And consumed it of energy, electricity, and two hundred and eighty nine thousand cubic meters. Or twenty eight thousand nine hundred and eighty nine cubic meters of natural gas, right? So natural gas has a big footprint, one of, uh, like Sean, one of the things that we usually do, which is. We put a real life system in, you don't have to heat up water, well, you don't have to heat up water, you don't have to waste gas, right? You take the gas heaters from the stands which have a higher carbon footprint, you substitute them with electricity. Yes.
Yeah, you do.
We've actually gone through the buildings that are G I C B already. Um, we took the, because of the tight timeline, it was part of our. Commitment to work with you to do it, as we started the audit process already, irrespective of whether you're going for it or not. We don't have the time to wait for the approvals and to do all that, so we just, we, we've been up here, we've gone through five, five, I think it was five.
Through the chair, John and I had this discussion and and I indicated that there could be no financial commitment on the part of the township or the C A over there.
Yes.
They were aware of that.
So we are fully aware and we were not charging you anything for it, nor would we. It was, it also gave us a better idea. Of what we were up against and whether it was even feasible. We wouldn't undertake such a task of committing to delivering it by the twenty eighth. Unless we had an opportunity to at least look it over and say, well, can we do it or can't we do it, right? Let's look at the level of retrofits. So, um, sorry, and and these are the things like H vac systems, roof replacement, solar P V array, geothermal exchange systems. Climate resilience retrofits, so uh, vestibule doors and stuff like that, that you can put in, anything that makes. Inclusive your your generator, right? Because that's another element that you're supposed to show, which is uh, climate change resilience. So what you, they would fund a battery or a generator. With a solar P V array, in case that you run out of power, that's called, that's resilience, right? Climate change resilience. So you have a shelter in place for the community. Should something go down, not everybody has to have a a generator. We have a place where we all convene and we can cook and we can keep people going for twenty, you know, twenty four to forty eight hours until the the hydro crews come out and repair. That's why you got, sorry, that thing. Um, it also requires that we do accessibility. Study and that you have that done so that you can once again guarantee accessibility and increase accessibility. They mandate that. Right? You don't want to have a bill, you're not, they're not going to invest in a building that's not wheelchair accessible because of somebody in the case of an emergency or something. And it's going to defeat the purpose, right?
Yeah, with, uh, I think it's twenty twenty five, the buildings must be adhered, adhesive to the A O D A standards, so it's a good opportunity to get off the curve there.
Yeah, so let's just start maybe putting it in context to. Our needs. So right now, uh, we're well aware that the Moose Creek Hall is structured to accommodate. Our needs. So right now, uh, we're well aware that the Moose Creek Hall is structured to accommodate, I think, so so. Right there, I think as far as cost, there's a lot of the costs that are being minimized for that reason. We've got the Hall in Chrysler, I'm not sure which is a brand new building. Now. For example, for the Hall in Chrysler, you've got roughly twenty two, it's under twenty five hundred square feet. Is that feasible to, like I, I uh don't know if there's a certain aspect of size that you're looking at to make it feasible?
Yeah, so let me tell you about the Chrysler. So the facility is eligible for G I B C and C D R funding. It's received a few upgrades over the years. Um, suggested upgrades you could do, you could definitely toy with, you could definitely. Ask for a rooftop solar to reduce the amount of energy consumed. Right? From the grid and lower G H G emissions. The HVAC systems, you have four systems. Uh, plus a furnace in a, in the basement. You have four HVAC systems.
Which, which one are we talking about?
The Chrysler Community Center.
Okay, I was talking about the new fire hall as far as being the two new builds. The new fire hall is the hall in Chrysler, again, there's the, you're, I think I looked at it, you're basically. Or the Hall in Chrysler is roughly twenty, say twenty four hundred square feet, I believe on the. And does rotation as far as where you're aligning to get the 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 most bang for your buck? Like I just, for example, if you look at the the arena, does it factor that the roof is basically north, south? So does that have a factor as far as versus having something that's more facing? Full on uh going east to west.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, from uh G I C B standpoint, no. It's irrelevant. Uh, revenue wise, quite a bit. Um, but um even revenue wise, okay, so. Um, that's where, sorry, that's where our expertise comes in. Okay, there's more than one way to skin the cat. Um, that's why there's um quite a a vast array of types of solar panel, everything from monocrystalline, polycrystalline. Thin film and dual dual sided panels and everything else, so. Yes, there are panels that if you are, if you have a a slope at the roof that's facing the the north. Um, then you're going to use two different types of panels. You're going to use thin film on the north side and you're going to use. Uh, polycrystalline or monocrystalline on the south side because they're going to get a lot more bang for your buck. What thin film does is it's cheaper, it never produces the same amount. As 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 Chris, as monocrystalline does, but. They do produce at a much lower rate intensity of light, so. They'll produce for a longer period of time, so instead of peaking as such in production, they sort of go. They extend the hours, so from dusk to dawn, they they produce. Cloudy days, rainy days, you name it, they'll still produce. So. It's how we balance, so that's part of the analysis we do, is we optimize. How that system is going to get you. I mean, we actually go through quite a bit of work, that's the bulk of our work. We 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 try to, we optimize it to get the biggest bang for your buck. So what panels work best in your climatic conditions and how can we best model the system to? Give you the most return on your investment. Right? So basically, that's it. If we can go to the next slide though, that would uh. So this is just the overview of the applicable funding stream, so right, so green includes the community building fund. Um, the community building retrofits, so C B R, how they work and combined, how that works, and then basically. This is, these are the funding streams, the development timeline, which is the next line, really isn't. Applicable here because we're focusing on G I C B, so it would be a a different timeline that we would do. Okay, so for the various buildings, even the Chrysler. Um. There's building automations, there's um, like I was saying, because. Although the HVAC systems we've refurbished five years ago, which is part of the the analysis that we do, right? The furnaces, the HVAC systems themselves are twenty years old. Right? So they're due to be substituted. So if they have, like Sean was saying very well, if there are still ten years of useful life left in the HVAC systems. We're going to say, okay, we substituting these will give you these savings, these cost savings and greenhouse gas emission savings. But because. It's not warranted because substituting them now and forfeiting the ten years still of available life on them. Would not make economic sense, so what we'll do, and that's why it's a twenty year project. Is we will substitute it, as Sean was saying, once their life cycle ends. So we take advantage of things now, we use them until they're done, but in substituting, we already know what we're looking for. And what our targets will be, and that's what that study is supposed to do. Okay, so.
That's great scenarios, so thank you for 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 laying it out that way. But when we get ten years in.
Yeah.
Then are we committed to uh applying revenue to 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 replacing at that point, or is this where the, okay, how does the grant work in that?
The grant doesn't.
Okay.
The grant. Okay, so let me be perfectly specific. We, Next Energy, has an obligation and is mandated. To give you a plan of how you will achieve eighty percent carbon reduction in twenty years. You are not bound by that. Okay, I just have to show you. And validate to the government, to C D R. That how it, according to this building, in this particular scenario, how I would go about getting to a net zero. What you apply, nobody's touching your pocket. You can then say, yes, we can do it, but you can say, look, we just don't have the bucks. Okay, we'd love to do all these retrofits, but we just don't have the money. And that. In part is the reason for this grant. Is to identify the shortcomings or where funding needs to be directed in order for the government to meet its greenhouse gas emission targets. Right? So if we're just giving out money, but we don't know where it's going, why don't we do fun studies? That at least tell us where the money is is required, so we can actually get bang for our buck, right? And and that's what that is, so it's noncommittal. And you can, you can honestly say, we'd like to do this, but we'll wait until there's funding available, for instance. Um, I don't know, give me an example of something we couldn't do right now, that there's no funding available that maybe in in ten years.
Place, for instance, my, I know there's furnaces to be replaced there, but maybe. In ten years, things will look a bit different. Um, on, in addition to John's point, what's great is it's noncommittal and it's designed to be flexible for the future. They're not going to say you're buying HVAC machine number eight in nine years, it's. We know our machine's expected to be replaced in around eight years. Maybe they're useful, like it's shortened or extended, um, but then you can look at the best technology available at that time, because they're not going to make you buy. A really old machine in eight years, it's, you're flexible to what's available at that time.
Right, like you just have a study that you could always refer to. When you're substituting and that you can uh benchmark and uh have a metric against. Which you can measure your your achievements, or or your your achievements towards that target. So you say, you know, when you're substituting something or just like lights, I mean, you you guys get retrofits for light. Well, we don't just necessarily substitute them all, sometimes we buy boxes of them and then as they blow out, we start substituting them. It's fine. Right? Like we don't, nobody expect, okay, waste is also a great big source of carbon, of greenhouse gas, right? Everybody says, well, just buy a new car because it balloons less. Yeah, I know, but you know how much it balloons to build a car, right? There's a lot of components in there, so um you have to measure, and that that's what you have to do, you have to measure the practical. With what, you know, what what you're financially capable of doing, because otherwise it doesn't work, right? So that's what we do, is we try to give you. An outlook and a feasible. Outlook to achieving a pathway to reducing your your greenhouse gas emissions. And how to do it. Okay, so to that end, we looked at um. The Finch Arena, um, we haven't put together a a final list of everything that could be done or not. Um, we will, like, I mean, we we in talking to the building facility manager. I mean, you need insulation, the low E ceiling is torn, there's condensation, that's fundamentally because. Your your um dehumidifiers are not positioned correctly, right? So you have too many on one side. Uh, the door openings and so forth, a lot, a lot of moisture in, that costs you a lot of money to get out. Um, there's a wide variety of factors that we have to calculate and make. Uh, a proposal on how we we change it and make the building more efficient, right? And if those things are all eligible for grants under the G I C B, they would be, right? So whether it be insulation, whether it be a new roof, whether it be whatever. Right? It was in the list of retrofits that were available, you could put any of that and include it. So the idea is to try to. Do that energy audit. Get as good a bearing as possible on what is eligible for that retrofit and take advantage of it now. Because, quite frankly. Haven't seen one as wide ranging as this one with that kind of a contribution for a while, right? The only problem that we have, sort of, we're still waiting on on feedback is Moose Creek. Right? Because. The C D R is a retrofit, we can't, it's not to say we couldn't do it with G I C B. Okay? Um, but the funding for this, for for the application for G I C B itself may not be eligible. We we actually sent out an email and we're waiting for C D R to confirm, because it's not really a retrofit, it's a new build. And new builds are not eligible, it's older buildings retrofit, so we have to see if we could. That does not mean. That to take advantage of the G I C B. We would not make a presentation to you, okay, I would, if I, but I need to look first at the specs, right? See the building envelope, what it's, what it's, what it's targeting. What the targeted, what the projected energy consumption is, see if I can put a solar array in there to meet the needs or what I don't. Do a net metering, net metering is where you send power to the grid. As a storage and then get it back from the grid. It doesn't work exactly dollar per dollar, but it works kilowatt per kilowatt. We paid a difference, right? So distribution charges, uh line costs and all that, that's not included. They'll take a couple of cents off. That said, you can overproduce by twenty, right?
Um.
To the tax portion of it, yeah.
It depends on the uh consumption model of the facility, um, how they're billed. Um, the one limit is you can't make a profit from the metering, so you can't just put a significantly oversized array on a building and then. Make profit on it, your best case is net zero cost operation for the facility.
Okay, so we would do that for, and we would make a proposal for you. Of for that one, if it's not eligible from C D R. We would just say, okay, listen, uh, we can put that in and then it would uh be a knowledgeable cost as development afterwards for. As part of, if you get approved for the grant. Right? We would do that, but we can't, I can't guarantee that Moose Creek would be eligible under C D R, so we, I don't know if we could put it under this envelope. Only because it's not a retrofit. But once again, we we've asked them, so let's see if we can get it.
So but the the no profit that you're, is that you're directly talking about the Moose Creek Hall?
Or you. No, any any facility, so you can't, okay, so in net metering, okay, so let's take an a an arena, for example. An arena uses an exorbitant amount of energy. But it uses that energy in the winter. You generate the bulk of your solar power in the summer. Right? You use the arena predominantly in the evening. But you generate electricity during the day. Okay, so how am I going to take that energy that I generate today and put it in the evening? What the Ontario government has done is they used to have this on, net metering was. Only allowed for residential users and it was on a monthly basis. So at the end of the month, whatever energy you didn't use. You you forfeited. And it started the new month to balance again. Now they do it on a yearly basis. Which is amazing for you guys, so. We produce a a ton of energy in the summer, that's okay, we bank it. We produce a ton of energy during the day, that's okay, we send it off into the grid. That's why you need to connection impact assessment, a connection cost recovery agreement, you need. To study the lines, you need to be able to do all that, candle lines, carried things, what upgrades are required at the local transformer station, how are we going to do it? That's part of, that's, I'm sorry, that's Greg, why I was saying this was an energy project. This isn't, once you start putting solar panels and stuff like that, it's not just applying for a grant. It has to make sense, and there's the software that they use. Is designed for energy, so unless you know your way around. The energy modeling world and the interconnection world and and the regulations, you're never going to get it off the ground. So. We generate, we send it to them, we enter into a net metering agreement, and then we take back power minus. The distribution charges and so forth, somebody has to pay for the power back and forth, but that's called the wheeling fee, right? Now wheeling charges. You're able to overproduce a bit, so I can convert. Some of the kilowatts that I didn't use, if I produce it more than I use. What he was saying, I can't make a profit, but I can use part of that to pay for the wheeling fees, okay, and for my. My charges and stuff, so at the end of the day. I can still get to a net zero, okay, I didn't pay anything, I didn't buy anything. If you size the 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 array properly. You're always going to get a little bit, because once again, there's that probability factor, so. One year, you may take a little bit more in from the grid than you sold. Another year, you may take a little bit more. Look, that's just your margin of error and that's climatic variation, there's nothing you can do about that, right? But so that's what, an arena is a perfect example, um. Moose Creek, the same thing, right? You probably use the hall predominantly during the evenings and so forth. Okay, so we generate during the day, instead of having to spend money on a battery storage unit. To store the power, we put it to the grid and then we take it back from the grid when we don't need it.
That's a very unique situation, because we're going to have a rental space and the rental space was built into the.
It's good.
It depends on on what business is going to be, you know, but that could be.
Right, so part of the audit that we do, it's, I'm sorry, part of the audit that we do is one of the things that we we. Get a hold of is. Exactly how many hours, more or less, how many hours the building is used and what what's the timeline, so that we know how to manage it. That said, at the end of the day. Because if you're in the net metering world, what matters is the total amount of energy used, the time of usage. Is really irrelevant, as long as you're sending, as long as you're not consuming more than you're producing, you're okay.
So, uh, again, our delegations are generally supposed to be fifteen minutes, we're.
Sorry.
It's not your fault, it it from from that perspective, it's all good information. But what I'm trying to understand is, what's the decision we're trying to drive to tonight? Um, and then I just want to kind of put my cards on the table. Um, from from this perspective, again, I've never been, I I I really. Personally have have an issue with the whole uh use of solar panels to try to. Uh, control greenhouse ga- gases in Canada, it it's just not a good fit for me. The thing that looks, things that look attractive to me are, you know, reinforcing the building envelope, uh HVAC equipment that may be wearing out. Roof replacement, I I can get behind those types of things because they they are, um, I'm not a, I'm not a, you know. I feel like I represent a a portion of of the population here, but uh. Um, from from generating uh electricity through solar panels, I feel like, you know. Anything that has to be so heavily subsidized for Robin Peter to pay Paul, so fundamentally, I'm not.
Well, look at it as a, as money that you're saving.
But, yeah, what's what's the, what's the decision we're we're trying to drive to tonight, if anything?
Through the chair, um, there will be a motion pushed forward, and and again, I was hoping um. John and Sean could provide some insight into what the real cost of this feasibility study would be. Um, for the township, because obviously, uh council would have to commit to the cost of feasibility studies. Uh, and that would have to be worked into our our two thousand and twenty three budget, so. That's essentially what we're here tonight for, to get in a a very detailed overview of what. The township may enter into if if council supports um a partnership with Next Energy.
I can't speak on behalf of all the council, but what what is your timeline? I know it's February, what what's the deadline, twenty eight, so. What's the latest, like, uh, are we talking? Tonight, are we talking by Friday?
Okay, so did the the expediency is that to apply for C B R funding? Okay, funding e- expenses are only eligible. Once you get an application number, so if we submit tomorrow, um, if we make the application, okay? Um, it usually takes us a couple of days, we need a a letter, the C A L can do it, but somebody has to say that the municipal. We will send you all the forms, the municipal, the municipality. Has to assume that you would pay for the study. We could cancel it if you didn't get it, but you would have to assume that you would pay for the study until you got reimbursed. The reimbursement, in the case of South Stormont, they waited uh three months, three, three and something, right? Three months, but they got, they actually got paid before they paid us. Okay, so they, when the study gets approved, it not only gets approved, it gets approved. And they look at who's doing the study, have you done this before, do you know what you're doing? Okay, you do, well, we'll advance you the money to pay them. It doesn't even come out of your pocket, okay, except for the twenty percent that you have, they'll actually give you the money upfront. We don't have that luxury, unfortunately, because we need that February twenty eighth deadline, so. We would need a commitment from you to move ahead, I I do have the. we would need a commitment from you to move ahead. I I do have the budget prepared. I'm sorry, I didn't, I I hadn't, when we spoke, we hadn't seen the buildings yet. It was impossible for us to put it together in all fairness. We do have it. We will give you the number that you can propose with all the breakdown. You have it there, don't you? Yeah, so he he can email it to you if you want, and then you can have it on your computer. And that would be the proposal. That's, yeah.
And it's that.
So just send him appendix A. Appendix A also, the reason I did it this way is because appendix A, there's a service agreement, contract agreement, and appendix A outlines exactly what we will do and for the fees that we would do it and so forth. That becomes, so that would then, if if you agreed, that would be the terms of the conditions that we would negotiate and you would change anything on there. Uh the reason we would need to do this is because, okay, we submit the application. They usually get back to you within two, three days a week. And they'll tell you, okay, your buildings or your application is valid and is eligible. Then uh it takes about another two weeks to get a uh a project number. Once you have a project number, so as long as we get the project number a day or two, before GICB is submitted, then we can say, okay, then our our costs are eligible, but costs are only eligible, we can backtrack and we will charge you a thing until we get it. We can only start charging once we have a project number, right? So we have to wait. So the faster you do it, you need to get the project number and I'm I'm sure you'll get it before the twenty-eighth, but you need to get a project number. So you need to put in that GICB, the CBR application.
Through the chair, John, are you able or is uh Sean able to give me the high level number so I can entrench it in this motion?
Absolutely, right? Except, do you want it right now?
Verbally or?
Sure.
I unfortunately, I don't have my computer in the meeting room, so.
So here, just take it over to him. Is that okay? Just take it over.
Because I will embed it in in the motion.
Okay, so the 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 part is your contribution, the municipal contribution is what that would come up to. So that would be for the Fincher Arena, the North Sarmont Place, Moose Creek Community Center, uh Chrysler Community Center, Monkland.
So the infrastructure that you're mentioning have to be on the list to be qualified. We can't add Chrysler Community Center after the fact, so they have to be part of the application.
Sorry, and that's that, therein lies the complication. It's a one, it's a one kick at the can deal, right?
Well, the, I I gave through the chair, that was, I was trying to to conclude was, in fact, the township would have to commit to the total amount, because we can't confirm that we would get any
Right, but we would.
Funding for the feasibility study, correct?
Right, but we could work with you on that, okay? Like we worked with South Stormont and as long as we got an eligibility number and the rest, we could hold off on, I mean, we're pretty we could probably I don't know, I mean.
And and my apologies, this is, this is public funds, so.
You have to, no, you have to connect to it, but I wouldn't, okay, so how would we work that? I wouldn't wanna put you on a, on the hook if it wasn't approved. I would never do that. On the other hand, um it is going to take quite frankly, two and a half to three months to get the full approval and for you to get a check. That's just what it takes. Now, is that the fastest, do you think? He usually does the application, so I'm asking.
Yeah, I would say we're hoping for an application number mid-February, at which point costs become eligible. Uh we've done a number, so it's the pre-application, uh they clear you, you pass go, and then you move on to the full application. We've done a number of them. So the day of, we resubmit. Uh I'd say within the next two weeks, we get a, the application number, allowing costs to become eligible. We submit the application. And then I'd say, yeah, like three months or so, yeah, for the decision.
So then that's when they would give you, because we, when we do in the application, we also ask for dispersment of funds, early dispersment. So they'll give you up to seventy-five percent of the total contribution.
So respectfully, can can you just provide me with the the amount that council would have to?
I'm trying to work on that. I'm trying to work with you here. I'm thinking, sorry, Craig. I'm saying that I didn't want, I don't want you to be on the hook for the full study, but you have to, it it is a requirement. You have to, you have to sign off that you would be willing to to pay for it if it wasn't approved. That said, we would cease, um if it wasn't approved, we would just uh abandon the the study.
So my.
We wouldn't incur any further costs. I mean, I don't know.
But that's, that's the challenge. I guess it depends when that yardstick stops, so.
Yeah.
That that's, that's the challenge I have.
Okay, so I would do it this way. I would work full throttle for GICB, okay? CBR, there's no deadline. Green Municipal, the Federation of Municipalities, there's no deadline on it. Look, let's work full throttle on the ones that are gonna be submitted to GICB. We'll take some risk. You'll take some risk, okay? If um
Ultimately, so but but ultimately, what does the township have to commit to financially?
Financially, you always have to make that commitment. You have to commit to the whole total amount. You have to, it's by.
Show me that total.
Yes, that, you have to pass a motion saying that you are committing, shoot that, just like you have to commit when you do the JICB.
So I understand that. The issue here, John, I'll be honest, I'm speaking for myself, to come down at the last hour, that's the worst part, that we're being pressured. You know your, it's your gig, you know all this stuff.
I understand.
We're sitting here trying to.
No, no, I I I fully understand and I understand, and that's why we were volunteering to be the audit person to try to work with you. But it, look, honestly, I wouldn't ask, it was in a conversation with Greg that I said, by the way, it it came out a couple of weeks ago, but CB, uh GICB is now going to ask for funding, for applications to be submitted by the twenty-eighth.
I'm not sure about trying to pass this tonight. It's, we have six days to our next council meeting of January thirty-first and what, again, I'll I'll look at that council. Uh I will be having a discussion with Mayor Fraser. I'll be having a discussion with Mayor McGillis. Like I, I just, I'm not comfortable saying, oh yeah, you know what, let's, uh and it's not that we're not going to, but it's just that I'm trying to put this in perspective to 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 move ahead.
No, Tony did the same thing. Like Tony was waiting, we waited for the we waited for the the full dispersment, right, in Northundas.
And me, it's not this, I I just, to come up to uh the thirty-first, which we can now pass it and maybe get get a bit better handle, but that's the, like I say, it's six days. I'm not sure what your timeline.
And through the chair, one of the reasons why we had this special council meeting dedicated to this very subject was John indicated that the time sensitive, time sensitivity of the now established February twenty-eighth deadline. So that's why we had committed to having this meeting tonight, instead of the meeting on the thirty-first, which was when they were supposed to present originally.
Yeah, and if you want CBR to pay for the study, that would do the GICB. Otherwise, the GICB, you guys went through it. Um with GICB, I'm sorry, Craig would have, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting you're in your council.
Yeah.
You had to commit and you had to pay for the study before it was actually done. You have to pay to do it. We're trying to say, here's somebody who'll pay for that study, but unfortunately, it's not the study, it's the time that it takes to get the approval for the study for them to pay, for CBR to pay. Well, we're gonna run up against a deadline.
Yeah, I understand that, but the outcome of that was a new community center at Moose Creek, which is hardcore, it's right there in front of us looking at being built right now, where this here, we're trying to envision more of, and I'm not sure if you guys have that same, that you're trying to see the first thing of, you know, you're talking about, oh, well, in ten years, if you're changing furnaces and stuff, like it's long term, but it's harder to to evaluate versus uh the CBR that we have where the.
Oh, no, like, don't get me wrong, you, when the study is complete, you have a breakdown of what your savings is right now in of what the savings would be in when you substitute this equipment, that equipment, that. So you actually get a breakdown that, but you also get an immediate, right now, with these retrofits, how the things would look. And and GICB is the faster, the faster, the projects that get developed the fastest are the ones that get the grant. So it's first come, first served on the first for eligibility, right? So if there's two, the two fire halls, but one has an in-service date, it's a month earlier than the other, this one will get the funding versus that one.
Counselor Bajjol.
So it's my understanding, though, so the CBR, uh as far as covering the eighty percent of that feasibility study, there is no deadline for that, that, that literally, it's it's an ongoing, we can look at that at any given, at any given point in time, is that correct? And then as far as CBR funding itself for projects, just based on my reading and understanding, is the max, they will go across a whole, you know, no matter how many buildings we include in that, would be two hundred K total.
No, no, five mil, right?
Feasibility study?
Not for the feasibility.
Feasibility study is two hundred thousand.
Two, okay.
And then
Sixty K not anymore.
Study, there are other funding streams available. Unfortunately, GICB closed at the end of the month, and then you would move into the CBR capital, so you could implement the immediately identified measures. And then you would have a plan for future and you can budget accordingly, knowing in eight years. So it's not just in the future, there is, yeah.
So the real rush right now, the the big push is is for the GICB, um which we've all seen is uh already extremely oversubscribed, has been since it was launched in twenty twenty-one. I've worked with the federal government, I know this. Um I know firsthand, they've been sitting on small to medium-sized projects for a year without announcing funding because of the large, uh the money's great, the projects are great, but because of the vast number of applications across the board, they've had to really rein in very quickly on this. Though, I I'm just thinking the likelihood of our community, who has already received funds under this program, significant funds based on our population, for us to rush into an agreement to try to get something else uh before the twenty-eighth to see this approved, I think the likelihood is very low. Not to say I'm not in favor of looking at feasible study, but but rushing this to try to capture a a program, uh a funding envelope that for all intents and purposes is shut, we will not see another single large-scale project announced, they're done with those. The reason they're capping the two hundred and fifty thousand or three mil warrants now is because they can't, they don't even wanna build up any more hope on that because they already are so oversubscribed. So I I think we're trying to rush, just make this, this this kind of sense of urgency for a funding envelope that's not going to be existing.
Okay, the only thing that you risk is exactly that, you hit it on the head. The only thing you risk um is the GICB portion.
So after the fact, if we still decide to go ahead with the feasibility study, the 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 CBR would still be willing to fund up to eighty percent of the cost.
Yes, and then we would, we could, if that was the case, then we could um do what we did with uh with uh Northundas, which is, yes, we wouldn't, um we would do the work, we would do the application, we would do everything, but only when you got confirmation of funding, right? Official confirmation, yes, the whole study will be funded, which takes two and a half, three months, then we start to work, yes. So it de-risks the proposition for you, but it increases, but you lose out on the GICB. But like, to do that, then the the window would close and you would have to um do that. Uh there isn't any other funding stream available that would allow you to do um that volume of of a rooftop solar, right? The other ones only allow for a penetration of maximum of thirty percent of the energy. Right? So it wouldn't, you couldn't get into that number. This one is the one that allows you to fully offset.
What's the number?
It's a two hundred and forty thousand is the total. Your component is forty-eight thousand. That's for if you, if you proceed with that. But that is, you know, and and that's, once again, those are, those costs reflect the GICB, right? Because it's a more elaborate application.
Yeah, and I I I agree with the mayor and thank you, uh Counselor Bajjol. That was really insightful what you said there. Um and and it's great job. I'm I'm getting it, I'm I'm getting it, but we're not experts.
It takes a while.
And and uh you know, the normal process here would be for you to talk to people who have expertise and then staff to come to us with the recommendation. And so, again, just given the conversation, I I don't, I'm not feeling really confident right now. Simply because I don't have the expertise and I and I want to have staff to have a level of exercise, expertise on on this uh at a minimum, just to kind of feel comfortable with.
Well, I mean, through the chair, our our staffing complement certainly doesn't have the content knowledge on on this type of, you know, specific report or feasibility study. I I don't wanna speak for Blake or or Andre. They were certainly part of our discussions with 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 John and and his company. Um but in order to really get a a deep dive in this, we'd have to get a consultant, I believe, and certainly Andre and Blake can correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have a level of expertise to.
Well, that's what we are really. We're energy consultants, right? We're not, we're not project developers. We don't develop them anymore. We're only consultants. We, we work for you. We don't, um if there is no competitive, there's no requirement for competitive bid process or anything. We work for you, we advise you, and you get, you guys are the ones who pull the trigger, not us. That, nothing is done without your consent.
Correct.
Hey, oh, go ahead, Dick.
I just wanted to also thank Counselor Bajjol for the comments, because that helped me a little bit. Feeling the sense of the urgency and the rush, it was just, it's just a lot to, but I wanted to say that I really liked the idea of a funding climate resilience for public buildings. I like the accessibility, that sort of green green fund option, I think, with all the extreme weather events and even over Christmas, how we had to have one of our halls serve. And I like that it recognizes that resilience and so there's a lot of positive things. I'd love to see a feasibility study, if we can make the the numbers work and and the dollars make sense for us, but I like the idea of having the feasibility study that's not blocking you in and you can look at things as they come up and you have that sort of educated extra lens. We have people doing asset management, but this could, you know, tie into our asset management, it'd be an extra consideration. So I just wanted to say I really like all of that stuff that I heard. But it sounds like unless there was some specific project that the staff or the administration felt we needed to get considered for this deadline for GICB, um that it's not something we have to decide on tonight. It doesn't seem like there's a level of comfort right now for that. That's what I'm hearing.
And with other municipalities, so even at forty-eight with grant coming into play, we're still looking at, it equals like a one point five percent increase on our tax, uh like it's it's a substantial uh thought that we have to put in. It's not just one of those where others, let's play.
No, but there are, there, um one of the things that I was telling Craig is that there are ways that you can get that forty-eight covered.
And and again, through the chair, those are all speculative and and I agree that there there, we could get them and you and I did discuss that, the possibilities as one of our adjacent townships has been successful at. However, the worst-case scenario was this council.
You have to assume the level, correct?
No ifs, ands, you have to.
It's part of the mandate.
Good, the council, Shane.
So I'm agreeing with what council said here, Council Bajjol. I feel it's very rushed for us being the new council here. A lot of money on the table. But the GICB has this February twenty-eighth deadline. And you've mentioned earlier that they're running out of funds, but is this something that may come back up in a year or two years down the road?
It may open up again next year. It may, it they're just doing that from what I've been told. The only reason to take an inventory, they don't wanna take anymore. They've closed the large projects because they wanna try to funnel as many of the medium projects as possible. So what they're doing is saying, show us everything by the twenty-eighth. We're gonna suspend all funding going forward and see how much money we've got left. And then we'll open up again or not, depending on how much is left, because there's a lot of projects, but there was a lot of projects, when you submit for GICB application, um in no disrespect, uh but when you submit an application, there's a lot of applications that are submitted, but are not, the application was submitted, but not the full-blown application. So the application goes through various steps. And a lot of people signed up, but they haven't got a valid um application. And a lot of people um will do the application in a year or two later, still haven't got uh things going. So this is one of the ways to shake the tree and see who's real, who's not, how much money have we got left in the in the kitty? How many projects have we got? If there's anything left over, they'll open it again. If not, then that's the end of that. And I'm sure there'll be another funding stream that'll come along. They always do. Um they're different. That's what the be, the beauty of CBR does, is it allows you to take advantage not only of today, but of tomorrow, and it allows you to prepare the groundwork so that if another one comes along, you've already got all the the required documentation, you've done the audit, you've done the accessibilities, you've done the reviews. So you're basically ready to go. You can tell them what targets you hope to achieve, because you've got it all written out. That's what the whole plan is. That's what the whole plan is. That's the objective of the CBR, really.
So do we, well, I don't know, so-called, do we call this a deferral or so?
Through the chair, we don't have to put forward a motion for monetary commitment if, if that's the rule of council and we can just take the presentation under advisement and, um, of course, move on with ratification of the, of the, uh, the meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, if that's council's desire, or we can put forward a motion for monetary committal, it's, it's at the discretion of council.
Well, council will, what I, uh, I still wanna see discussions, uh, staying ongoing with, with, uh, I don't know about hitting the GICB and trying to push that for, for twenty-eight or basically now or, or days from now. So I will, uh, what all I can do is I will read the motion that's on the table and then I'll get direction from, from, uh, from council. So be resolved, the council direct staff to include the amount of, we have to put the full amount on here. So the amount of two hundred and forty thousand within the draft twenty-twenty-three budget for the cost associated with the creation of the feasibility study regarding community buildings retrofit as per the presentation from Next Energy Development Group Incorporated. Uh, so that was moved by counselor, although we had a mover in seconder, but this was added
Correct.
after the fact, so.
Through the chair, the, the CAO administration did not have the numbers and, and unfortunately, John and his team were diligent to get them for tonight.
So the fact that this was, I can ask for, uh.
I think I seconded that and I prefer not to.
Yeah, so I think now that we have the number, uh, do we reframe and, and, and?
You could ask for a mover and a seconder, this mayor and, and some.
On the motion that was read, do I have a mover? That's right.
You're correct.
Yeah, yeah. But we still could do the deferral, which then, and not put a date to it, but so do you just prefer if I defer this? Or, or do you wanna not accept the motion and it comes, it falls off the table and then it can always come back?
We can always revisit it, but if it's deferred, we can, we can bring it up at a later date.
Okay, so if that's the case, then I do need a mover and a seconder, then we can defer for at a later date. Let's counsel. I need a mover and a seconder.
And the motion does.
So for now, then I don't have a mover, so we'll let it die and it, it can always, uh, yeah, yeah. So be resolved that the bylaw number four seven dash twenty-twenty-three being a bylaw to ratify and confirm council's action at a special meeting of January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Be read a first, second and third time, pass, sign and seal and open council this twenty-fifth day of January twenty-twenty-three. Uh, was moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Shane. All in favor? Motion is carried. Be resolved that this regular meeting adjourns at eight o'clock PM. Uh, moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Shane, all in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. We won't be having a resolution for that. So that's a, a wrap for the meeting. Thank you very much for everybody that attended and we'll see you on, uh, next Tuesday at, on the thirty-third.